You see, you want to do roll call?
Livy, oh, here, Ryan. Tanya.
Here.
Brett.
Here.
We have a quorum. And I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda, do we? And we need a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the tonight's meeting agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And prove, need a motion for the meeting minutes of September 2nd.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 2nd, 2025.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, old business. Have none. Uh, new business, uh, presentation of the 2026 proposed budget by Beth Marsh.
Evening. Okay, so before you, um, you have the budget that's proposed, um, just want to give some highlights to everyone. So this year's budget, um, we've put the salaries based off of a 5% increase. And then this is just what's in the budget. Obviously, you still approve the salary resolution and the longevity, um, we increased that as well. As far as any additional changes to salaries in the, um, police, we've added one full-time officer for 2026. And we increased the wages for the fire department for the first-class, um, three-year patrolman to around seventy-three thousand five hundred in order to be able to recruit. Um, that was to be more competitive because that's been an issue. Um, and then the benefits, we increased at 15% for the health insurance. Um, and then for the most part, generally for like the supplies and all the other expenses, we in just increased it at 3% for the most part. Planning supplies, um, we increased fifteen hundred, um, per the request, um, the uniforms we increased a little bit. But the police vests were purchased last year, so that portion decreased, um. So, and then on other services in the general, um, fund, the planning was requested for, um, ten thousand dollars for professional services, and that was offset by twenty-five hundred decrease for part of it for training. Um, promotions, we added three thousand dollars to accommodate, um, the holiday party. Um, and then we just increased the fifteen hundred dollars to reflect the current fees. Um, the trash contract, we increased it based off of the contract, but keep in mind that that's an offset to income because it's the exact same amount, so it flows through. Um, one of the big changes was on the insurance because our insurance has increased, so we paid our insurance in August, which went up about eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so for next year in August, we put a 30% increase because we really don't know what that's going to be because we want to make sure we have enough to accommodate for that. Um, so we just put that in there as well, just to make sure we, um, could accommodate that. Um, and then utilities, we increased to 10% on capital outlays in the general fund. Um, we added, um, a police car. Um, local road and street, we kept the budget the same. We didn't change anything there. On MVH, motor vehicle highway, um, same thing with the salaries was a 5% increase in the longevity. We did add two employees to that. The benefits were again 15%. Um, the supplies again and other services for the most part were 3%. We did the same thing on insurance there with the liability insurance. Um, and then we have, um, added eighty-nine thousand plus a little bit, um, for the MVH restricted because part of that has to go restricted for, um, like for, for roads and things like that. So we put that in there for potential. And then utilities, um, and then we just on capital, we just did 3% just to on that. In the park department, same thing as far as the pay, the 5% plus the longevity, benefits 15, so there was really no other changes there. Um, on the supply section, it was the 3%, but we did move festival supplies into park supplies this year. Um, and then under other services, uh, we moved festival events into repairs and maintenance, and then we did the insurance and the utilities. Um, under capital outlays, it's planned for seventy-five thousand for restroom renovations and eighty-eight thousand planned for fence replacement. Um, Heath has not, he's deferring the money that's in the current year's budget so that he can buy larger things for next year. So, um, because of that, we won't spend it this year, but that was a hundred and fifty thousand. So we potentially will have to do, um, an additional appropriation next year if because, you know, sometimes you never know with ordering and things when they come in and things like that. So we don't really like to put that in there until we know. Um, the cumulative, um, the CCI, which is community capital improvement, there was no changes. Community capital development, there was no changes to the overall budget. So the overall, um, increase to the budget was about 13%. And a lot of that was due in part to, um, the insurance, and then we've added some positions to that. Um, one of the things I just want to note that's changed this year, so, you know, with everything in session and the bills and the budget is the revenue. So there was a 4%, you know, like increase on the levy. But the big thing that's changed is the circuit breakers. So just to give you a comparison, last year's circuit breakers, or meaning 25, were four hundred and seventy-eight thousand two sixty-three. Next year, they're estimated for eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is an 84% increase. Now yours is going to show, um, there, it's a little bit higher because, um, one of the things, um, you have is we've done an excess levy appeal for four hundred thousand. We really anticipate to hope we probably will get about three hundred and fifty. But you always want to do it high just because in case something changes, you get that. We've also added, um, when meeting with Joe, um, last week, there's some annexation taking place that should finish by the end of this year. So we've also added fifty thousand dollars for annexation for additional monies that could be coming in. So I, I wanted to make sure we got all that in this year's budgets to help us with revenue. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Beth, I know we talked about some additional sidewalk money. Was you able to increase that at all?
Yeah, so those are, yeah, we were able to, um, put that in some of the capital.
Okay.
I've got that in there. On the next meeting, just to let everyone know, we'll be having the public hearing, which is October 6th. And then the adoption meeting is October 20th, the following meeting. So. Okay. Anything else?
I think that's it.
If you come up with anything between now and then, just let me know.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next we have, uh, uh, we need to do a recess.
I'll make a motion to recess the regular council meeting and open a public hearing to discuss the three separate voluntary property annexation. Excuse me, annexations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we need to are we going to go through them again, the annexations?
Uh, no, I, I was planning on it, but happy to address any questions you may have on those three.
Are we asking for public questions or?
Oh, wait, just a second. Is there any public comment for the annexation? Anybody have any questions?
Not me. Just need a motion to close it then?
Yeah, I think, don't, don't we make the vote first? Or no vote on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene the regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then, I think Adam, next meeting, we'll have the resolution for the fiscal plan, right?
That's correct.
Fiscal plan is adopted, then you can vote on the one more step.
One more step.
That's right.
Correct.
Uh, next up, we have the first reading of ordinance 2025-9A text amendment to the Murchell-Louth PUD uh, to seek council feedback. Um, public hearing is scheduled on this for the planning commission Tuesday, September 30th at 6:30. Adam?
All right, so for this particular request, if you recall, the Murchell-Law
by council last year. It'd be driven by, uh, all development. They decided not to go full project after recent approval granted, so, uh, there was another buyer that has property, property that was contracted called Steve Bodnar Development. And back when, uh, you know, you know, or Bodnar used to be law, but, uh, they are a slightly different plan than what was originally approved. Um, and so as part of that, uh, first, the east side of the property, the light industrial commercial side, that's all unaffected by this text. So we're looking at the west side of the property, my family component. And most notably, um, what they are looking to do, instead of having a whole, one story scattered, uh, the west side of the project, they're consolidating. They are brought to, uh, South Madison Park. And they are they are proposing to other single family leases, single family units. Have seven to 10 units attached. All mine, all garage in the back, essentially a private housing. So, uh, first reading is to get the, to start the year. Comes, certain they have, and planning commission over, um, here. But, um, all in all, I think that this design is better, it's approved. It's probably, uh, product. And I think it's had the, uh, some of a story present show in close proximity to the south side for some, uh, an easier transition to some higher three-story. So that, if questions, I so, thank you. It's have the town, it's only like three dumpster area. Big project, possibly be um, that's a good question. Saying that, how is not, I haven't seen anything in, uh, that, uh, since they have X amount of dumpster per X amount. I know it's not in our zone, but um, that's a, that would be a question of developer, how right side
Yeah, this is, uh, Michael Garvey with SC Bodnar. Um, if I could just have a minute, I can walk through very quickly a summation of our project and our belief in the design, um, what it accommodates and achieves. So in total, it'll be a class eight development with 205 units with a full amenity offering, including a pool, fitness center, work areas within the clubhouse, the full clubhouse for socialization and pickleball courts. Overall development cost forty-two to forty-four million dollars. We've adopted a development plan with two basic designs for specific reasons, which Adam has referenced. So first first two multi-story, three-story buildings to provide height and density along the future boulevard, which is a characteristic which we've discussed in tandem with the direction of the town staff members. These buildings total 165 units. Our clubhouse will front on the boulevard as well. For well-founded reasons, which I'll address, we then transitioned the design to the west into a 50-unit, single-story product with garages. The reasoning for this modification is threefold. First, we believe this product will be very well-received and desired by existing and future residents of Fortville in that most suburban properties are all multi-story. So this offers more of a house feel, if you will, or a home feel. Two, uh, from a land planning standpoint, we believe transitioning the development to the west with single-story structures creates much better overall and consistent feel as the project is connected to the neighborhoods to the west with what will be two public thoroughfares. This also creates a more pleasing sightline for those homes into the apartment complex. Third, uh, mark, the markets for apartments have proven single-story product retains residence for a longer period of time. Thus, creating a less transitional population for the project.
With the single level.
Pardon?
I'm sorry. I've seen that product before, though I like the single story.
Yeah, well, thank you. But, um, we do as well specifically for this location. We think it's the right thing to do, budding up to the neighborhood to the west. And again, our experience and our market research show that people stay longer, they take care of their homes better than a more typical transient type of resident. Um, also, we've been working closely with Cronin Associates on the, how this will be assessed and what contribution will be made over time to the already existing TIFF district. So, um, with that, the, we've all, both parties, Cronin Associates and our firm have looked at comparables, come up with an assessed value per unit that we think will be, uh, arguably achievable and in place in, upon stabilization in pursuit to the most recent um, analysis or forecast provided by Cronin Associates. Just a multifamily property should be able to contribute, um, over eleven million dollars of assessed value revenue, um, over a 25-year period. So Adam's pulled up the elevation, you'll see two different elevations, one front and one back. Um, we have been working with Adam on um, adding a little more definition to the roof lines of the individual pitches, so we've enlarged those. We have added, uh, railing for the lower patio, which was not there previously, and we've put mullions in all the windows, um, which is also a staff request.
Big plus on the covered porches. Yeah. And pitch.
We just, um, so you're aware, we've built thousands and thousands of units. Um, we actually, for this project, interviewed and hired a new architectural firm to us, which is regionally based, award-winning. They, um, specifically direct most of their energies to multifamily development. So we've been working with them very closely on this design of both obviously the multi-story and single-story product. And they brought some unique, we think very favorable ideas to us and which we think benefits the project and the town. This design does comply as drafted with all the setback requirements and new percentage requirements for the materials that are outlined in the ordinance in the, in the PUD. So as an example, 20% masonry was required, this has a little over 20% masonry.
Now, the PUD is then going to cover just the, the west side? Or is it going to cover the whole project still? Because I think the original one was the whole project.
Yeah, it, it, it's a really good question. As drafted and recorded, there's a PUD that covers both um, the nineteen plus minus acres on the west and nineteen plus minus acres on the east. Generally speaking, the east is light industrial, um, in nature with some definitions and restrictions as to building height, et cetera. Um, we have that land under contract with a different developer. Um, we do have a preliminary plan, but they are going to be coming to through the same process with a PUD modification independent of ours. Um, that will include an owner-user building, a light industrial building, and they would like to introduce a retail component to the eastern side as well. They are in the process of authoring that in its near-final form and will be behind us chronologically, but presenting a modification as well to the PUD for the eastern land.
Anybody have any questions for? I think it looks really good. I like it a lot better. I know that.
Okay, well, thank you. And we go, we've been working closely with Adam and we go in front of planning commission later this month. Did somebody ask, I, I had very hard time, I apologize, hearing, but did somebody ask about trash?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what was the formula for, um, how many dumpsters for this large of a project? That was just asked, uh, by a resident.
Oh, okay, the answer is we're doing more of an industrial compactor that will be enclosed, and we've situated that so a, the the truck can come down the public thoroughfare and easily back in versus having to traverse through all the units. So we will use a service that is not uncommon for nicer multifamily properties called Valet Trash. So actually, a third-party company will pick up trash from everybody's individual residence. Um, I can't, I apologize, I don't know the, the frequency of that, and then they will dump that into the trash compactor.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-9A text amendment to the Murchell-Louth PUD.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we all need to sign this?
It'll go to plane commission and then they will make their recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next up, we have the department heads. Joe?
I don't have much for you this evening, but, uh, at the last meeting, I let you know that we had one of our employees resign to go to another job for a little more money. Um, this last week, unfortunately, we had one of our newer hires was in a bad accident, and he's going to be laid up for 10 to 12 weeks is what he's telling me, so. And he hasn't been here long enough to even have his insurance or anything at this point yet, so hopefully he, uh, he heals up and we can give him another shot if, um, if he gets released and can come back. But other than that, we're down three people now.
We get ahead and now we're behind.
One step forward and two steps back.
Adam, anything else for us?
Um, the only thing that I wanted to make you aware of had to do with um, RDC TIFF revenue beginning in 2026. Alex, is that something that you could maybe give the council of an overview as to what the discussion has been, what the impact is, will be?
Yeah, so we've discovered, and Buzz can fill us in more, or maybe even Beth, but the, the county let us know that we have been capturing more TIFF revenue than we should have been capturing for a while um, on some of the original TIFF developments. And so it's gonna, there isn't as much money that will be coming in, in the future. Yep, so the, the county let us know, and Adam or Joe jump in here if I've missed some of these things, that the, uh, the TIFF revenues have been over-collected and overpaid over the last few years. Part of it is, is, uh, residential was being counted, and that's being carved out now. So basically, there's going to be, the short story is, there's an adjustment, we're working on what those numbers will be. Uh, we've looked at what, um, that means with respect to this proposed, uh, SC Bodnar development that we just looked at in the, the Public Works Project Building, South Madison. I think we're still in good shape there. Um, but it's, it's going to be less. Um, and it's just, it's just an adjustment, so.
Why did it take us so long to figure that out?
Um.
And is it, is it the residential piece that's messed it up, then I guess?
The big piece of it, yeah.
Wow.
Wasn't it a software glitch, like it was an actual software?
Yeah.
I see. Mistake. It wasn't a county mistake or anything like that, just
Yeah, no mistakes.
That was, was it Baker Tilly, someone from Baker Tilly found it? And they notified us.
So we're probably not the only one that's suffering from that.
Orville, but I think, um, just about all of the jurisdictions in Hancock County, including the county itself that relies on TIFF. And in fact, Hancock County wasn't even the only county. There have been other counties in Indiana that have been affected by it as well, so. Um, we just wanted to put that out there, so.
And it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that there's, oh, my God, we don't have the money to do these projects. There's, Adam, Joe, and I were on a call with Buzz on Friday. There's still money there, the things that the town council, town and RDC are planning on doing. All of that is still, it's not going All of that is still, it's not going away. It's just, it's going to be less, and so we just need. Buzz has got to rework some of his numbers, working with Missy. And so forth, and just make sure that. You know. We've got updated calculations based on this adjustment.
Everybody wants that Tiff money, so we better get that number.
Yeah.
Well, I think. Again, the only other thing, um, worth noting is. There's, there's been a tremendous increase in. Single-family residential building permit activity, so that's been keeping us really busy. Um, a lot of that growth is in buyer's estates. Um, so I think we did another forty-seven permits in August. That was after we did fifty permits the prior month, so. Those are historic, uh, numbers for us. Um, the good news is that. We have a third-party, um, building inspection service. That we can utilize. Uh, we renewed their contract. And, um, all of the costs associated with that will be passed along to the home builder, so it won't impact any existing. Funds. Um, and so, excuse me, buyers' estates specifically, uh, basically that neighborhood is going to be turned over to this third-party inspector, so that'll free up Jerry. To be able to do the remainder of the inspection, so. Excuse me. So the good news is I think we've got a good handle on it and, um. Um, you know, I'm, I'm pleased with how the neighborhoods are turning out. I hope the public is as well and you guys are. Um, but we want to continue. To make sure that the neighborhoods coming out are of good quality. They look good and they're a little bit different than what you might see in some of our neighboring communities. Doesn't matter if you have any questions, anything, be more than happy to address those.
I have a question, um, more R D C, so you might push me off to them. Um, when they give funds out for like facade grants, um, do they follow up if there isn't? Like, for example, the Carnegie Library. Um, we gave the money, I believe they used it. I, I don't know, I. I don't know how they were using it, and it's, it seems like a stale. Project, like, there's nothing happening.
Yeah, actually, uh, coincidentally, there has been some movement on that project. Um, they will be going to the Plan Commission this month. Um, for approval of their expansion, uh, their renovation and expansion. So, um. Yeah, we were aware that there's been a lag, um, on that project. In terms of getting some approvals, but coincidentally, they are moving forward with some, so stay tuned to the next Plan Commission.
Okay.
You'll see something there.
But is there a, um, is there a follow-up at all with the R D C when they give funds for a project to make sure the project is done?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a couple of things is, um, if I remember correctly, last year. The redevelopment commission passed an amendment to their rules. That basically said that, um, I think the funds are only valid for one year. And I think the funds for this project, I want to say were. Committed in December twenty twenty-three, so it'll be up to the, the R D C. I would assume they would, um. In good faith, renew it. Um, but to my knowledge, that's the, the only project. That they've given money to that has a lag. And then lastly, um, in terms of accountability. After the project is finished. They have to provide to me all of the, um, invoices, receipts, everything substantiating. That the work has been done and then also, um, take pictures and provide a presentation to the redevelopment commission so that this way the public can see how those monies were, were being used and. That's another, uh, component of it.
Okay, thanks.
Heath, do you have anything?
Heath with the Parks Manager, I've got a list of things, uh, try and roll through them pretty quick. First thing is first, um, I need to get a vote from the council to, I think Pat also has a surplus, uh, thing today. To declare the fiberglass turtle, the ten-foot straight metal slide and the sixteen-foot spiral slide as surplus, so we can. Move forward with trying to open up bids and that fun process, so. I'll take some vote from you guys to declare that surplus.
If you guys want to make it easy, just throw mine, it's on the next line item. It's a twenty seventeen Ford Explorer, last four of the VIN three zero three two. That way you're not repeating it again.
Uh, what were the four things again? Fiberglass turtle. Ten-foot straight metal slide. And the sixteen-foot spiral metal slide. Those were obviously items that we had taken out. Um, and were able to salvage when we put in the new playgrounds.
Is it just a motion we need to?
Yeah.
Make them surplus?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to make the sixteen-foot spiral slide, the ten-foot straight slide, the fiberglass turtle and the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer, last four of the VIN three zero three two. As surplus.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Second thing I have, um, I don't necessarily think it needs a vote. I just wanted to get your guys' kind of approval on this. The, um, baseball program that rents the outdoor facilities has asked if they are able to put up some sponsorship banners. Um, they get sponsors that essentially, um. Cut the costs down for their players. Um, they run scholarships and, and try to help out needy families and things like that. And so they were just asking for they could hang some sponsorship banners on the outfield fence like most baseball programs do, so I just wanted to get your guys' approval of, uh.
Are you talking about like on the fences of the baseball field?
Yeah, on the baseball fields that they use.
Yeah, I, I think this is different than, I think, two meetings ago when somebody was asking about. Sponsorships on like the light poles throughout town. I, I, I see this as a little bit different because it normally goes on baseball fields and, and fences, so I would be okay with it.
I'm good with it.
Good, perfect.
I mean, do we, do we know like what businesses it is? Is it going to be like? It's going to be family-friendly businesses? I mean, I guess we need to check that out. Just thinking of, uh, you know.
The next thing I have very quickly, the last three things, uh, the basketball hoops are done. If you haven't seen them yet, they look great.
Look nice. They look awesome.
So that time of year, we're having a tough time keeping the, keeping the, the court clean because of all the leaves starting to come down and everything drying out, but.
I was out there dunking and they take it really well.
Yeah, I'm sure. Just in case anybody hears about it, I did rent a piece of equipment on Friday. Um, we are trying to cut a fire break through those woods up there and. Um, we've got some trees along that, on the south end of the park and the woods that. Um, eventually, we're going to have to tend to that are right on the property line, but on our side, obviously, we've got houses fairly close to that. But we've got no way at this point in time to be able to get equipment back up in there to be able to handle that stuff and the slope and grade of. The homes behind there are pretty steep, so it's easier to come in from the park side, so if anybody catches any grief about why are you guys ripping up the woods? Um, that's why we're going to try and clear everything out, all the underbrush and store and kind of clean that woods up. Get the trails cut in, even if it, even if we don't do the, or get the grant for the, the Indiana Trail Grant. People utilize those woods. And walk with the dogs. We want to be able to at least mow and maintain some trails up and through there, but right now, we can't even get a mower through because we don't know where all the dead and down stuff is, so. We're ripping through those woods pretty good. Um, and then the last thing that I have. The next meeting, I've got to touch base with the consulting company, but should be the public hearing meeting for. Uh, our Parks Plan. Um, I'm assuming they're coming in to give that presentation. I will have a conversation with them, obviously be on the agenda packet. Um. And then we'll, from there, once we have that hearing, then we can have you guys approve the Parks Plan on the first meeting in November, so we can then go to the D N R floor, so that's all I've got unless anybody's got questions for me.
Heath, did you want me to mention real quick about the Mount Vernon North?
Yeah, no worries.
If you recall, I want to say last year, we had a. Brief conversation with council about the idea of the town taking over. The large parkland area in Mount Vernon North. Um, and from what I recall at the time, it was kind of. A stance of we need more information, we're not opposed or in support of it, but let's see how it progresses. Maybe as early as the next meeting, we'll have a formal. Uh, thing for you to consider. Right now. Uh, the developer wants to turn over. That land to the town. Um, and there are absolutely some advantages for us to take it. Like anything, there's trade-offs as well. Um, but. From a staff perspective, Heath, Joe and myself went out on the site, looked at it and then, um. Came up with a staff. List of, um, if the council were to approve it, this is what we would recommend, so. Um, we're pretty close, um, and then once we iron out a couple of details, then we'll provide the whole package to you to take a look at and. Um, give it your yea or nay, so just want to let you know that's coming up.
I got a question. If we don't take it over, would it be on their H O A to, to maintain that park?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. That's all I've got, unless somebody's got anything for me.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Patrick?
Uh, I don't have anything really, except, uh, I'll be gone the meeting of October twentieth to the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference. Unless you have something for me.
Want to tell everybody about Art's Award?
Oh, I can do that. Um, so I'm sure everybody's seen it on Facebook, but I nominated Officer Freitas for an award through the Central Indiana Police Foundation. He, uh, was awarded that award for the Officer of the Month. It covers. Officers from. All over, all the counties surrounding Marion. Um, everybody puts nominees in and Art was picked. So they came out and gave him a gift basket and I gave him his award. They were unable to make it due to him working night shift, but, uh, I gave him his award last week. And I'm very proud of that. Um, Art does a great job. He goes above and beyond and, and I appreciate Central Indiana Police Foundation. Lucas Oil, who does the sponsorship of that program, so. Thank you to them and thank you to Officer Freitas for doing a excellent job and going out of his way to do extra stuff.
Yeah. This is, we're only, that's the second one in the county that's, did you say, or the, is he the first?
Uh, he's the first in Fortville.
Yeah.
Ever received that award. So.
That's good. He's great. Appreciate all he does.
Me too.
Missy, you have anything for us?
I do not, unless you have something for me.
Alex?
I do not, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Public comment? No comment, okay? Um, I need, need a motion to approve and sign vouchers. Oh, council, I'm sorry. Sorry, Ms. Libby. I didn't have any. I know you guys are getting that. I can feel the pressure.
I don't have anything.
Anything either.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fourteen. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks for coming.